I'd like to just quickly give thanks to our IT department for arranging our new setup for this evening. And due to the change in venue, I'd like to just announce that we will not be offering a public comment session this evening. We are considering adding a public comment session at our next meeting. If we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, the Board of Education would like to offer a moment of silence for the lives lost in the worldwide pandemic and to those families impacted by COVID-19 within our community. Thank you. On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to thank those in our community who are on the front lines of this crisis. From the first responders to healthcare professionals, doctors, nurses, pharmacists, those working in essential businesses during this time, we are so sincerely grateful and humbled by your service. In our school district, we'd like to extend our gratitude to the central office team working tirelessly to adapt to our school closure, providing resources to our staff, emotional supports, food, laptops to our students, real-time communication updates to our community. Your efforts have been nothing short of outstanding. Thank you so much. To our staff, you've truly risen to the occasion. You've demonstrated resilience, flexibility, and creativity during this unprecedented time. Our sincere appreciation for your continued dedication to our students as we all navigate this temporary new normal together. To our students and families, thank you for your continued support, cooperation, and patience during this transition to learning remotely. We realize that this is a tremendous change and it's not an easy task for anyone. We all recognize that our lives changed within a day's notice. As Superintendent Puro communicated to our community this weekend, we continue to let our core values guide us during prosperity and during crisis. Know that our staff and student safety and well-being are paramount to the Board of Education during this time. Thank you. Okay, may I have an approval of the agenda? Tim first, Pete second. Thank you. Motion approved. May I have an approval of the minutes from March 4?
移到
Ted first, Val second. Any questions or edits? Okay, motion carried. Board of Education reports. Monroe County School Board Association, just a brief update there. We have canceled all meetings in the month of, through the month of April. The only exception to that schedule would be our executive committee meeting, which right now is still scheduled for the 29th of April. The venue for that meeting has not yet been determined, but we are keeping that on the calendar. More than likely, that will be a virtual meeting as well. The next board president's meeting is still on the calendar for the 6th of May. Outside of that, all other meetings have been canceled and I think the entire board has been updated. Other meeting reports, anyone have anything? If you could just shake your head no if you don't. Okay. Dates to remember, we still have a board visit and tour on our calendar for the 16th of April that remains on the calendar until we hear from the governor's office. And the 20th of April is our next regularly scheduled meeting. Next on our agenda is the Pittsburgh Central School District nominee for BOSI's board. And I'd just like to read the letter from Monroe One BOSI's. This year, there are three seats on the BOSI's board to be filled. They're presently held by representatives from Honeyway Falls, Penfield, and Pittsburgh. Each candidate must be nominated by the component district whose representative is up for election. The nominee must be a resident of the district making the nomination. When a district nominates a candidate for the BOSI's board, it should do so by adopting a resolution in the following form. Be it resolved, and our candidate this year is Kim McCluskey, residing in the Pittsburgh Central School District, is hereby nominated as a candidate for membership in the Monroe One BOSI's board for a term of office to begin in 2020. May I have a motion to approve? Irene's motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Renee, thank you, second. All in favor? I opposed. Motion is carried. Financial report, Darren.
February treasures report. We got the fourth quarter. Based on the information that we have at this time, we're expecting the third and fourth quarter, I'm sorry, the second, first and second quarter to be about 20% less, but that should put us on track for the budget for the current year. The school, the food service program had one less serving day this year than the year before, but still managed to finish with a positive balance of $12,000. And the, the program is trending well. Sorry, I'm gonna go backwards real quick to talking about the, the revenue and the cash flow. We currently have $17 million in seat now. So we have pretty positive cash flow to get us through at least three months of what we're dealing with. So I might be hearing from some of your other board members in other districts that are very concerned about that. Cash flow wise, we're in pretty good shape.
Great, thanks Darren. May I have a motion please?
Still moved.
Hey Ted first and Kim is second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Give a thumbs up? Opposed? Motion's carried.
Next is a budget transfer for your board policy. Anything over $75,000 requires board approval. Our special education BOSI's are a little above budget. It's based on how the, the assignments are for the students where they turned out, as well as BOSI's made some changes in their unit pricing. They tried some new models so that they would not have to have as many one-to-one aides. And, and that proved to be more expensive for some districts that proved to be a little bit more cost-effective.
Okay, may I have a motion please? Kim? A second please. Val? Any questions or comments? All in favor? That's Irene. I don't see Irene moving. Okay, all in favor? I opposed. Motion carried.
Next is the capital reserve bus purchase proposition. Hopefully you all received the three presentations regarding the budget and the bus purchase proposition was in one of those. We were proposing to buy 11 buses and replace the work truck that we use to repair the buses if they break down in the field or pull them out of ditches, et cetera.
May I have a motion please?
移到
Second.
Okay, so we have Ted and we have Renee. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried.
Okay. And then under information, just wanted to make sure everybody got the budget presentations and if you had any questions.
Thank you Darren. Did anyone have any questions they have for Darren right now? No, okay, thanks Darren. Human resource report.
I'm sorry, I would just note that, I would just note that the budget presentations will be posted online.
Thanks Mike. Okay, human resource report, Mike Leone.
Thank you. First for your consideration is the professional staff report, originally dated for March 16. I'll just point out that we do have a retirement of Julie Bowers, one of our longtime technicians who's done great work for us over the years. And I just wanted to acknowledge Julie.
Thanks Mike. May I have a motion to approve please?
移到
Okay, we have Pete and we have Val. Any questions or, or all in favor, sorry? Opposed? Questions, comments? Okay, motion's approved.
Next for your consideration is the support staff reports. They're both from the 16th and the 30th and appointment of a new mechanic and a new cleaner.
May I have a motion please?
移到
Kim and Ted? Questions, comments? All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried.
The third one, if you could pause for a second, Mike Leone? So, so the third one is on the agenda is the modification of intent to retire. And I just wanted to share with people who don't have this in front of them that we are certainly not sure when we're going to come back to school. And in times of uncertainty, sometimes the best thing to do is to maintain the level of expertise that we have in all of our areas. So the modification of the intent to retire is to rescind Mike Leone's retirement as assistant superintendent for human resources until mid-year next year. And we thank him.
Yes, thank you Mike Leone. May I have a motion please?
移到
Pete and I have Renee as second. Any questions, comments? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you Mike.
And finally, for your consideration is the Board of Education resolution in order to do the hourly pay. The, the way that we put this together after consulting with the superintendent and Darren, Assistant Superintendent for Business, is we did it from the time that the original states of emergency started through April 1st. But the provision does allow the superintendent, if continued closures go, to extend it. The whole idea was instead of doing something blanket for a long period of time, since things change so much, is to allow some flexibility. But this does allow us to continue to pay our hourly rate people who have set schedules with us. This would not cover however, substitute teachers that would be called on in just a daily, daily set. And if there's any other questions, we have to answer them.
Thanks Mike. May I have a motion please?
移到
Okay, I have Ted. May I have a second?
Second.
Oh, sorry Irene, Irene second. Any, any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks. Special education report Elizabeth.
All items are on the consent agenda.
Thanks Elizabeth. Superintendent's report, Mike.
There will not be a need for an executive session this evening. On the agenda, you'll see first reading for policy recommendation 5577, which is Medicaid compliance program. I don't know if there's any immediate questions relative to the first reading. Please feel free to let me know if you have any questions regarding the new policy. Just want to share a few thoughts about where we're at right now. And, and I think that from a lot of our perspectives, dealing with the COVID virus is, is something so unsettling in part because it's something invisible. It's something that's, it's not tangible per se. And I think when, when we look at where we are right now, it's, it's easy to feel or sense a lack of control or feel helpless. And for all of us to do what we can, to be supportive of one another, to remain optimistic, to know that we're all fighters and we're all one community is going to make us all that much better. I want to go back to that lack of control piece for a second. It's important to understand right now that we're in a position like we've never been in before. And so we have a lot of questions that are still unanswered. And a lot of the answers that we're looking for aren't answers that we can find in our typical collaborative nature. And so we're relying on several other people making decisions for us right now. And we have to have faith in their decisions and, and take their decisions and do the best that we can with them. So when we talk about who's making decisions right now, it's, it's the gov, at the governor's level, it's at the state education's level, and it's at, to some extent Monroe County Health Department level. So as I think about some of the things that are anxiety provoking for some people and questions that are unanswered right now, are things like, will we return to school this year? And if so, when will we? And that's actually, it's a heartbreaking thought for me, even thinking about our seniors. So it's a question. That's an example of something that's not up to us. So we're gonna have to wait and see where we're headed to bring kids back. Regions exams, our question. Hopefully we'll have an answer possibly this week relative to, will we have regions exams? My hope is that there's some guidance relative to if we're not back by a certain time, we'll, we'll cancel the regions. We have questions about board elections, questions about budget votes. What we know right now is that they have both been moved to June 1st at the very earliest. And then we have other questions. So we have questions like what happens if we come to June 1st and schools are still closed? And, and so those are, are questions that we're gonna look for answers for in the future. We have questions about what will state aid look like? When we listened to the governor yesterday during his briefing, we just saw, saw this number come up and without a lot of explanation. And so we're not sure if state aid at that level means that zero means we go back to last year. If zero means zero, if zero means it is what was proposed at the beginning. We have questions about what will school be like when we return? What types of supports are we gonna need for students? We have questions about the future relative to will there be another gap elimination that's needed? And then we have other questions around things that are internal, like how do we handle teacher and administrator evaluations known as APPR? What do we do about tenure recommendations? So I promise you this, that, that all of these questions will be answered over time. It's frustrating because normally we're the ones that are finding the answers. But I will promise you that whatever the answers are, that we will be okay. Honestly, we'll be better than okay. We're, we're a strong community. Our children's and our students, our families, we will turn the corner and we'll be better than ever. There, there's a lot of lessons I think that we're all learning from this. And I think that they're all different. And I, and I hope that one of the lessons that we're really looking introspectively and, and thinking about our priorities. Thinking about the power of being grateful, the power of having supportive relationships, loving our loved ones, letting them know that we love them, using this time to be positive and supportive, thinking about how we can help. So I think about how can we help on social media, for example? How can we use that vehicle and that platform to say thank you? And not criticize? To, to, to know that right now more than ever, we need kind words, we need respect, we need love, we need people to come together. So I would just challenge the community and, and, and think about how can you help in these times? Now, what are, what are things that you can do to help a neighbor, help a, a friend? And you know what? How, how can you help the people that are at the front lines? Not only in hospitals and, and senior centers, but how can you also help the people that are working with your kids? How can you send a letter of gratitude? Because this is new for us. We're, we're not a district that ever had a one-to-one computer ratio, for example. We, we put all of our, our trust and professionalism in a level of autonomy that has yielded a lot of success for a lot of years for us. It's allowed for a lot of personalized attention, a lot of individualized learning, a lot of hugs, a lot of high fives, a lot of individualized attention to kids that are, that need it. And so we're finding our way through this right now. We're, we're doing a lot. And, and I want, I want people to understand that while schools closed is the phrase, schools open. And, and our challenge right now is to open ourselves to that, that idea and hope for a sense of support and cooperation and collaboration remotely. And I mean that from the lens of as a parent, as a teacher, as an administrator, as a board member, how are we communicating in a supportive way to help kids? Because that's what we're in this business for. So just to give you a recap, we've gone through three phases so far in our instructional program and this remote learning for us that's, that's been ongoing. And I have to thank so many people for that. People have been working tirelessly. Everyone in the central office team, especially our assistant superintendent for instruction, our teacher leaders, our teachers, our, our teacher union, everyone is all in on this and everyone's doing great. And this morning I had a, a unique opportunity to join our teacher union executive committee meeting, which just shows how close this district is. And they were able to share with me their challenge is trying to find the right balance between what to send, anxiety for kids, not sending too much, understanding the true equity issues that we have. Equity not only in, in, in technology, but, but access to parents for support, especially at the elementary level, for setting up accounts, for navigating schedules, et cetera. It's been remarkable and I wish people could see behind the scenes how hard our folks are, are working here. But I, I want to give you kind of a quick overview. When we first found out we were gonna close, we had, it was on a Saturday. And so I think we had a day's notice to pull things together. And, and in that time, our staff came in and at the elementary level, we provided a variety of learning activities for the kids to take home with very little new learning and, and materials that they'd have to access by themselves. Now, at the secondary level, we did the similar type of, of work, giving priority to certain classes. So we're in, we're, we're just about ending phase two now, which, which incorporates special area teachers, on-core teachers, non-regents, non-AP teachers, all sending home materials they developed together in March 16th and they were holding. And they're going out to families or gone out to families on, on March 23rd. At the elementary level, very similarly, teachers coming together to develop things together, to collaborate, and they sent information home on March 25th. Middle school, core, and high school regions, AP teachers also began sending home additional materials as needed. We're now at phase three. All of the community, the, the parents and students should have received a letter from me saying that teachers at all levels will be expected to add the following elements into their instructional planning. Things around new instruction with essential learning concepts, holding students accountable for, by providing evidence of completion on essential tasks, providing students with informative feedback, having that two-way dialogue, keeping track of work, complete or incomplete, and engaging students in some kind of face-to-face interaction with technology. I also want to note that our routines in our lives have, have changed significantly and we're all, we're all struggling to some extent. And we need to find a way to, to develop a routine that works. And we're gonna need each other's help in, in doing that. We've developed 160 websites. Now, I'm sorry, we didn't develop them, we've identified 160 websites. And they were identified by teacher leaders and centralized on our Pittsburgh webpage, our homepage. The websites are high quality, they're aligned with essential learning because we want our students to be engaged. So I would say to parents and to students and whoever's listening, it is a robust library of, of websites that you can feel comfortable going to. It can be used for supplemental and engaging experiences as well. So as you think about your routines at home, I would encourage you as a building in this routine, if you feel your children need something additional or something extra or something more enrich, enriching. I want to thank our, all of our central office team for so much of what they've been doing so far. We have created and implemented a student help desk at the technology level to support students through K through 12. And at this point, they've already closed over 200 help tickets for both staff and students that are accessing them directly. I want to thank our, all of our data teamwork and continuing with all the committees they've been focused on. The Infinite Campus Messenger staff support and Office 365 support and email support that they've been assisting with, processing student attendance reports, disaggregating our graduation data. And I mention that because life doesn't stop. So when we get through all of this, there's things that we're gonna still need to continuously improve. Our data team has communicated with our new kindergarten families to reschedule and support screening meetings. They've created a policy, a recommended policy regarding privacy and security for students and staff data. We've, we've done a lot behind the scenes relative to human resource work. The hiring, the posting, the interviewing, unemployment claims, processing medical and unpaid leaves, staffing and, and is ongoing. Darren and the, and the business office have been amazing with continuing payroll, working on, working through a budget when it's so unknowns and, and looking at different options depending on which path these go, that we go down, which again is, is sight unseen right now. But they are all hands on deck, looking at how we can best protect our students and staff and community and tax, taxes. Also, the work that Pat has done with regards to mental health has been extraordinary. The work with our nurses, making sure we're checking on students regularly, identifying students that need additional support and following up on the students, providing additional website to support people relative to the, the mental health. And the, the care and the thought that goes into all of her work. Pat and her area has worked with counselors, psychologists, behavior specialists, school, social workers, Pittsburgh youth social workers, to make sure that all kids that have been identified are getting, having contact with either physically or on the phone or through video conferencing. Our communication department have been superstars, creating a website dedicated to the COVID-19 response. Our superintendent's weekly messaging on Tuesdays and Fridays, they've been critical. YouTube playlists for Pittsburgh Reads, which are our librarians hosting read-alongs for students. Developing a flatten the curb campaign, which is something real positive to help us really be active in, in trying to end this, this virus. And the thought of suspending and canceling or postponing events in the district calendar, coordinating with the town coordinating with the town of Pittsburgh, supporting teacher webpages and updating information on our apps. Elizabeth in special education has been amazing and also having to think out of the box. One, one of the things that I think is, is remarkable is the sense of care when you're able to host a CSE meeting and then parents still feel connected and be able to, to do that. So making sure that, that parents are taken care of, that the programs are taken care of. I'm, I'm thinking about the things that the teachers under Elizabeth's direction are doing to make sure our assignments and all accommodations are made. So our, our work is going stronger than ever because we have a conviction that we're gonna get through this. So we're doing things right now that are both in, in response to this for the right now, but our eye is also to the future. And I can't thank our staff enough, our central office team enough, our board enough, and really our teachers enough for all that they're doing and, and our building principles and assistant principles for all that everyone's doing. We love kids. We love our community. What we're doing is not perfect, but we promise to always give you our best and do our best. And, and know that our hearts and our thoughts and our prayers are with you and your family, especially if you have people that have been impacted with the virus. And I look forward to the time we return. I miss seeing your faces. I miss being in buildings and, and look forward to being back to normal with all of you. So be well and, and again, thank you for being a, a, a community we can all be so proud of. Thank you, Amy.
Thanks, Mike. It is, it's truly amazing listening to everything that's going on behind the scenes that many of us don't have an opportunity to see, especially, you know, when you don't have that face-to-face contact. So again, we can't extend our appreciation more by just saying thank you and to our families that are listening tonight and know that you are in our hearts and thoughts and prayers as we move forward. And we look forward to all being together. Yes, Mike?
Just one, one more thing that I, I want to thank the Pittsburgh Food Cupboard. I forgot to mention them. And, and a huge reminder to, to families to please keep doing what you're doing. We did a great job with, with collecting cash and food items and donating to the Pittsburgh Food Cupboard. But if you could continue going on the, the link for the, the food cupboard and make a donation if you can, we're feeding a lot of families. And they have been gracious enough to extend not only to our Pittsburgh 14534 zip code, but beyond that, to, to feed families that come to us that are on the outskirts. So they've been doing a phenomenal job. It's been a pleasure to be their partner. And I would just ask that people keep thinking about those that are in need of, of food on a daily basis.
Okay, thank you. All right, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Hey, Ted and Pete? Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Any old business? New business? Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn? Kim? Irene? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everybody. Be safe, be well.
Thanks, Amy.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. It's good to see you guys.
Bye.